Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, Spurl.
You want to close that, yeah? And Jeff will be acting clerk this evening, so go ahead and call the roll and we'll get started.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee. Trustee Hines. Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
And trustee Bond.
Here.
There's five of us here this evening. We do have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and move on to item four already, which is public participation. This is the time in the meeting when any member of the public can address the board on any topic that you choose. If you want to come down to the podium, and if there's a sign and sheet, I hope there is. Teresa, is there a sign and sheet over there? And so this is a two-minute opportunity where you can address the board on any topic that you choose. If you are both, or everybody's on the same topic, just keep that in mind. And we'll go from there.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. My name is Tricia Lustig, and I live at 2404 Hanbury Lane here in Montgomery. I've been here for 10 years. I had an incident on Thursday where my daughter was hit by a car. And I'm sorry, it just hit me today. I've been working so all weekend today. The motions just came today, so please bear with me.
No, don't worry about it.
She's an eight-year-old adorable little girl who goes to Lakewood Creek. She's so intelligent and just wonderful. So she was walking home with our neighbor Thursday after school, like she always does. And living on the corner of Hanbury and Avalon, we've trained our children to be very careful about that corner. It's kind of a stigma in our neighborhood. There's been so many close calls in the past that we just know. I've learned from the Benzes, my good neighbors, because their kids went through it, and the Foremans, because their kids went through it, the Neils, because their kids went through it, and now I'm the last group that they're going through it too. So we've, I've learned the lessons. I've heard about the close calls and everything else. So Thursday she comes home, she runs into the house and slams the door, and she cries inconsolably for 30 minutes. She tells me that she can't talk about it because she's scared. And I said, "Honey, you gotta tell me, because I don't know what to do for you." She goes, "Mommy, I got hit by a car." And I was like, "Oh, my God, are you hurt?" And she's like, "No." For a sigh of relief. So anyways, I was like, "How did this happen? What happened?" And she's like, "Well, we were crossing by the Benzes' house, and I looked, Mom, I swear I looked twice." And I'm like, "I believe you. You don't have, you know, you don't have to prove it to me, just tell me what happened." And she's like, "A car came, and he tried to miss me, but he still hit me, and he hit my belly." And I checked her belly, and there's no bruises or scratches. Thank God for winter coats. But I was like, "Oh, did he stop?" She goes, "No, he kept going." How dare he? So anyways, I just held her for a good half an hour, and I said, "You did the right thing. Let's just calm down." And we had to move on with our day. Oh, my God, I can't believe I'm in a blurry mess. So anyways, life happened so quick on Thursday, we're busy. I find out from my neighbor she had seen what happened, and she asked if Ray was okay. And I'm like, "Yeah, she is." She goes, "Just that was a super close call." So Friday, I call the police to make a report. And after all our news on Friday, a wonderful police officer came and took the report, and we're in the process of filing all the paperwork with the state and everything else, because it's classified as a hit-and-run. So I'm thinking about it, and I'm trying to figure out, what do you do? What do you do? You've got to make it safer. You can't just not do anything. So I started asking people out through our Montgomery crossings, neighborhood Facebook page, to see what people's general opinions were of that area, because I wasn't going to come here without the support of my neighbors. So I had a very good response. Everybody was positive, helpful. So I started a petition, just to get the written approval and support of my neighbors, which I have here in the envelope. So far, we're about 16, and that's just one day down. So, sorry. Long story short, that has to change. I don't care if it's one kid crossing or 400 kids crossing. No kid should be able to worry day in and day out about crossing that intersection like our children do. Now, we know speeding is an issue. It's always an issue everywhere. And that's not my point about the stop sign. The stop sign is to give the pedestrians and the motorists the opportunity to stop, pay attention, and understand whether or not it's safe to go through that intersection. The little sidewalk that is going from Avalon in front of the Benzes' house to the corner of Hanbury, I don't even think most people even know it's there, quite honestly. They don't understand that children are crossing. So the very next day, on Friday, I decided to go out there, supervise, and take a video to just see what a typical day looked like. And the same time of day, the very next day, I'm taking a video, it's posted with the petition, and there's a white minivan or SUV, and my daughter and our neighbor are standing, actually in the Benzes driveway, because there's no bounds of snow on their driveway. And it sped up right in front of them to get through that intersection, right in front of my daughter. And you can see the kids trying to see around the vehicles. And that's the thing. There's vehicles parked where they have a right to park. The kids are the same height as those vehicles. Those oncoming motorists cannot see around those vehicles to see the children that are tucked behind those cars where they're trying to be safe. So I'm asking the village to consider a three-way stop sign at the corners of Hanbury and Avalon to ensure that people can cross through the intersection, motorists and pedestrians alike, without hurting somebody or getting hurt. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I, I have staff prepared to answer some questions. I actually saw your petition online over the weekend, so some of them are able to go out there today to take a look at the situation. But the first thing that I would say is, as a parent, that's an emotional, an emotional story, and one, one instance of something like that is more than enough information that we need to take this seriously. So I wouldn't spend additional time going out to get signatures. One voice in this room is enough for us to take it seriously and look into it. So I can assure you that we will do that. And then I think our public work director, did you have some stuff you wanted to add on that, too?
Just briefly, I mean, we don't have any conclusions yet, President Brawley. I did go out to the site today, tried to catch the afternoon dismissal. Is that when the incident?
That's when she was hit.
You know, about, was it about 3:30-ish, once she gets out of school?
She gets through that intersection around 3:30, 8:00, 8:40.
Okay. So we're there at the right time. I mean, we made some just initial observations. I made some initial observations. I'd like to go through our standard process, where we spend a longer period of time there, and we count cars and try to see what movements. I also noted that there were some parked cars at, on the Avalon section of the intersection that, that your description is right on. They can block views or kids crossing. There are certainly kids walking that way. I counted about 21 coming from Lakewood Creek eastward. Most of them went by, but there are two other intersections, so we could have the same situation. Kids being kids, some of them crossed mid-block halfway before they got there. So that, I mean, that's not saying to diminish anything, but, so, after all that, I'd like to continue to work with the chief and our village engineer to review the site more in depth and come back to the board with some thoughts and possible recommendations about what we might do.
Certainly. And what's the, just for their benefit, what's our standard process? We have had requests like this come forward in the past, and some of those, we have determined that a stop sign is warranted and needed, and sometimes it comes back that it's not. And so you just highlight that briefly?
Our standard process is we do what's called a warrant study. There's a list of, I think, eight warrants that if you meet a certain number of them, generally, a intersection will qualify, or some type of traffic control, can be stop, stop or yield signs are what we usually focus on. So we'll go out and do that warrant study. I think it involves a two-hour time period. I don't want to prejudge, but I think what we'll find is that an hour or so before 3:30, or 3:35, it'll be pretty quiet.
It's very...
We'll have about 15 minutes of activity, and then it'll be kind of quiet again. So we'll want to focus on that, that high-volume period and try to determine how many conflicts there are between vehicles and pedestrians. So we'll do that.
And one of the big things, sorry, go ahead.
No, that was basically it. So we need to do the warrant study, really, the first step.
And one of the big things, and one of the reasons why we don't always put a stop sign in, at least in my opinion, is that if you put a stop sign in when the stop sign isn't warranted, or it doesn't feel like there should be a stop sign, you could actually create more of a risk for people who think they have this sense of security that people are going to stop, but people might blow right through that. And so we're very cautious about putting up stop signs from a legal standpoint as well. So we will absolutely look into this. I know that we've had, our deputy chief, I know, was out there this, today as well, or by, through that area, and we will look into that, and we'll definitely do that study on the, on that, and we'll def, we'll report back here, but we'll also report back to you specifically.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
I have a quick question, if I may. Mike, how long's a warrant study typically, by the time that you go out and do the study, until we get our, our facts or findings, I guess? Is it a couple weeks, a month? How long?
Oh, no, I think, you know, if we say this is a priority, we could probably have it done, we have a committee of the whole next week? I think we could have a report back to you by the committee of the whole meeting.
On Tuesday? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm here tonight, my name is Michelle Torres-Turnage. I am here tonight to request that our village budget money that is needed to update our code enforcement software. I strongly believe that updated software would allow better communication and improved reports that would be a great asset, not only to our code enforcement division, but to the police department and to the water departments as well. Our family witnessed action taken by the village of Montgomery to turn off water to two homes very close to our own home. The homes were occupied by families whose homes had gone into foreclosure, but they were still being owner-occupied. Both homes had occupants, one of them including young children, who continued to live in the home for several days, even though the village had turned the water off. It is apparently clear that we, as a village, need to improve the flow of communication between our departments. With better communication will come better enforcements of nuisance properties. New code enforcement software is needed to assist the village in identifying repeat offenders. It is my understanding that the village currently uses what is called the LAMA software program. This antiquated software is known to be error-ridden, does not allow for customizations, and is not used to keep track of financial information that the village could use. Most alarming is the lack of report capability that the software has. Our village has grown over the past several years, and we need tools to effectively manage problems in our communities. If the code enforcement department, the water department, and the police department, and even our local homeowners association groups work together to identify and tackle nuisance properties, we, as a village, could benefit. Data shows that areas that have higher code enforcement issues also have higher crime issues. I believe that our departments would be able to communicate more effectively if given the proper tools. I am urging you to consider my request to please budget for new code enforcement software. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Appreciate it. And I know that that's something that will come up at the next, or one of the next meetings, when we will, talking about the budget. So we will, appreciate you bringing that to us. I know you chatted with several of us over the weekend at Farm and Fleet about that, too.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on. I'll read the consent items and then entertain a motion for approval. We have a minute to the committee of the whole meeting from January 20th. The building report for January of 2014, 2015. Accounts payable through February 4th, 2015. You know what, and I said the wrong, on item A, it's January 20th, 2015. Back to item C, accounts payable through February 4th, 2015. Requests from Misericordia, Heart of Mercy, to hold their annual Candy Days Drive. A request from the VFW Post 7452 to hold their annual Buddy Poppy Drive. And with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bond, seconded by trustee Spurling. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
That carries 4-0. Thank you. Moving on, items for separate action, we have A and B, I think, are related here. We have the recommendation from Plan Commission on PC 2014-020Z, which is alternative surfaces in manufacturing districts. This is a text amendment to Sections 311 and 13 of our zoning ordinance. And with that, I will ask Director Young for his summary on this item.
Thank you. Over the course of the last two Plan Commission meetings, the commission has looked at and discussed a recommendation to approve an amendment to the M1 and the M2 zoning districts to allow for outside storage as a special use, and with limestone aggregate as the surface in lieu of a paved surface, which is currently required. This recommendation would meet IDOT standards for limestone aggregate with a CA1 and/or a CA7 base for storage yards only. This would, as proposed, would not include any day-to-day vehicle storage or parking. That would still have to be on hard surface. So this would be for, as proposed, would be for heavy equipment that's moved periodically in and out of a storage yard site, and other materials that go along with primarily construction-related businesses. Other proposed aggregates may be allowed, as it's proposed in the text amendment, if approved by the village engineer. There are a number of different types of surfaces that we contemplated, but we felt that, on a case-by-case basis, each one should be looked at independently. Performance standards would be set for dust and nuisances. This could be controlled, and there'd have to be a control plant submitted by any company that wanted to have this type of a storage yard. We would have a deposit that could act as reinforcement, that the village would have a blanket easement to go onto properties and treat primarily for a dust condition, if necessary. Setbacks, as proposed by the staff, included 250 feet to the right-of-way and 250 feet for any distance from residential properties or commercial sites. The Plan Commission, in their recommendation, chose to take out that provision in terms of setbacks to the right-of-way and any residential or commercial properties. And their reasoning was, is that they felt that they could be looked at on a case-by-case basis, as each special use application was reviewed by both the Plan Commission and ultimately by the village board. We felt that a review of our current regulations gave us the authority to mitigate dust problems, and the measures within our current regulations were adequate. The commission asked us to look at alternatives from other communities. The staff did review other community regulations and found that what we had in our wording was adequate, and more than adequate, to deal with this outdoor storage situation that would be of a non-paved surface. So what we're looking at is outside storage that would include materials, products, and equipment, but again, not vehicles. The village would have access easement rights to go in and maintain or control dust, if necessary. And usually, those control measures would be something like calcium chloride as a treatment to a lot that would be in a dry condition. So again, that would be for the M1 and the M2 zoning districts, and both the staff and the Plan Commission have made recommendations for approval. The difference would be whether or not setbacks, setback provisions would be included.
Okay. And I know several of us have served on Plan Commission over the years, and going to this, or at least allowing this on a special use basis, is a pretty decent shift from what we've ever allowed before. I do think that it's proactive. One question that I did have from somebody was, and you may have covered this, and I apologize if you did, would, in this district, would anybody be able to use this, let's say, for their parking lot, or for a, an area where they have customers come or park? Any of that?
No, it's quite clear that day-to-day traffic and day-to-day visitor parking or employee parking has to be on a paved surface, and we feel that we've reiterated that even with this text amendment, if it was to be approved.
Okay. That's what I thought.
I have a question regarding the 250-feet setback being stricken. Was the feeling that it might not be enough, or that it might be excessive?
The feeling generally was, I believe, and it was a 4-3 vote on that specific item. So there was kind of a split feeling amongst the Plan Commission, but I think that the general thought was, by the majority, that on a lot-by-lot basis, you, in some cases, you might have the distance that it's irrelevant, that you wouldn't have that as a problem. For instance, the next case you're going to see, it's nowhere near any residential property or really commercial property, so it's a non-issue. But other M2 or M1 sites within the village that may apply could be directly adjacent to residential properties.
You know, I was at the Plan Commission meeting, and there wasn't, in my opinion, a ton of discussion on that, on that one topic. There was questions related to whether or not, and this is my main concern, not lot-to-lot setback, but the, as it's drafted, it's intended to be 250 feet from your gravel parking lot to a residential lot. And I think, I would actually like to see us put that back in this. I think that it provides that level of protection as a requirement of the special use, not so much up to the discretion of a future board, or, or the property owner that's coming in. At least then, that would be written in the code. That's just my opinion.
I assure that, you.
I would agree with that.
Are there any other questions of staff on this, either A or B, which is the recommendation and the ordinance?
I'm assuming, if we put that 250 back in, I'm assuming that when it goes to Plan Commission for a special use and comes before the board, that we can always negate that 250 if we needed to, or adjust that?
It would be a variance. If you put it in, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you put it in the provisions, then that would be a variance along with the special use, if somebody wanted to have a 100-foot setback.
I would agree. The only qualifier would be, I suppose you could go larger. You could make the condition of the special, the grant of the special use, that 250 isn't enough, based on your findings of the impact on neighboring properties. But I think, I would agree, I don't think you could go less without a variance.
Okay. I have no problem with the 250.
There's no more discussion or?
Motion to approve with the amendment.
Well, what we'll do first is the recommendation, so we won't change that. So we'll just take a vote on the recommendation. Set a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve recommendation PC 2014-020Z.
Timeout. Second.
There's a second? We'll hold on just one second.
Sure you got it right.
Just a second.
That's Youngerman on a 20-second timeout. That's his first.
He gets one more.
There's two left on the clock.
I was only giving him one.
He's the last one to vote. Can I just go ahead?
Just a second, and we'll vote without him.
Where we got a second?
Oh. We'll just start voting.
Maybe he'll bring up some discussion. Thank you.
The full board should benefit from that discussion, I think.
Yeah, it was a conversation we have all the time. Go ahead, Attorney Anderson.
Sure. Trustee Youngerman had asked how, not how to vote, he's not asking me that, but the impact of his vote. And what I was explaining was, item A, number one, the recommendation is non-binding on you. In other words, it's accepting the Plan Commission's recommendation, so it's really quite irrelevant how you vote on that. Item B, though, ordinance 1653, currently, the draft does not have the 250-foot setback in it. So his question was, if he was in favor of the 250-foot setback being in the ordinance, should he vote yea or nay on that? My answer was that if the ordinance, if the motion was to approve ordinance 1653 without amendment, you would vote nay on that. If, however, the motion is to approve ordinance 1653 with the reinsertion of the 250-foot setback, you would vote yea in favor of that. So it depends on how the motion comes out.
And just so everyone's aware, the recommended from Plan Commission does contain the 250 for this special use recommendation. It is in there.
Yeah, but their discussion or their intent was that, this might have been printed even before that. Their, when, when they voted, they, their recommendation was to strike that. So they voted to approve, they voted that a 4-3, so...
Information that was given to them, which is what you have, had it in there, and then they took it out at their meeting. So their recommendation does not...
So on the non-binding, the first one, that's not...
Take the roll?
Take the roll on the recommendation.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
That carries 4-0. Thank you. So on the ordinance, is there a motion to approve ordinance 1653 with the insertion of the 250-foot setback?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by trustee Spurling. Before we call the roll, one, one question that I, I know the answer to, but I should ask, does this negatively impact the applicant that we're going to?
No, it does not.
Okay. That's what I thought, I just wanted to ask that. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
That carries 4-0. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item C and D, which is a recommendation and the ordinance from the Plan Commission for a special use for outdoor storage to include alternative surfaces. That's funny how that works, isn't it? So with that, I'll ask Director Young to give the introduction to this.
Thank you. So our first test of this new text amendment would be a case for Michael's Corporation. They have a building that has been vacant for a number of years that they'd like to purchase at 1266 Orchard Road, and also, in conjunction with that, a vacant lot behind the building. This property is Zoned M1. This would include, if approved, storage with the CA1 and CA7 surface as a gravel, limestone gravel surface, that would meet the standards of IDOT gradation for the gravel itself. They would fence the storage yard, it would have a chain-link fence. There's already existing chain-link fence on a portion of this property, but it would be extended to the east. There would be barbed wire, as allowed by code, in the industrials district for their storage yard. They intend to have heavy equipment and some materials, primarily construction mats that go along with their company use or operation, that is primarily utility work for companies all around the Midwest. As I understand it, they have three satellite locations in northern Illinois that they would combine, both from an office standpoint and a storage yard standpoint at this location, and start off with about 45 employees and add as they go along. The staff personally is excited about seeing a vacant building within this area be occupied after a number of years of being vacant, and add EAV to our industrial area. So the storage yard itself, at the rear of the building, would be eight acres. The other paved surface would be, as we've talked about, include vehicle parking for day-to-day operations and visitors. There is a PowerPoint that Jeff has from the company, and there are representatives from the company. Their headquarters is in Wisconsin, so I welcome them, if it's appropriate to...
Yeah, certainly. Welcome, guys, if you guys want to come down to the podium. I'll start by saying trustee Lee couldn't be here today, but seeing that you guys are from Wisconsin, he is, he is sad that he can't be here.
Well, sad, we've had the opportunity to meet him a few times, and it's been a pleasure every time, and he never fails to remind me that he's the one who's the Packers fan. So that's, that's all I, you know, I remember after the first time I met him, the second time he came up, I was pretty sure I recognized him, until he reminded me of that, and then I instantly knew, oh, yep, that's, I remember how I knew him. I'm Andrew Simon, I'm associate legal counsel with Michael's Corporation, and this is Andrew Schmidt, he's a property manager with us. We're both here as employees of Michael's Corporation, and I wanted to start first, and just thank you, as the board, for... just thank you as the board for, you know, taking the time to allow us to give a presentation here tonight and to consider our application. And thanks, staff, you know, it's been great working with them, you know, through this process, and they've been very accommodating, very prompt. We do these all over the country, and, you know, it's been, been, truly been a pleasure on this one. And also to tell you, we're, we're excited to come in, I'm excited to be part of the neighborhood, what we've seen so far, you know, staying down here on a couple of these visits and, you know, going out to the diner across the street and really trying a few of the other places, it seems like a cool community, so we're excited to be here. I would like to take the opportunity tonight to first give you a little background about Michael's Corporation as a company and what we do, and then specifically what we plan to do here with this property, the 1266 property. So first, who we are. We're a diversified construction company, specifically specializing in infrastructure and utility construction. So we build a lot of, a lot of big things, whether it be windmills or roads or putting transmission lines in, we have a number of divisions. We're family-owned and operated. Now, when I say we're family-owned and operated, I, I mean it. We were started by Dale Michaels in 1959, and his, his sons still run the day-to-day operations of the company. And I'll show you our, a picture of our yard in a little while, and you'll see, you know, they still actually, they'll go through the yard, and if things are out of line, you know, you hear about it, you know, they still are, take very seriously their name and their reputation. We're headquartered in Brownsville, Wisconsin. For those of you who aren't sure where that is, don't feel bad, it's about an hour north of Milwaukee. But we're really an international and really a multinational company, and we have 5,000 full-time employees at any given time throughout North America. So we have operations throughout Canada, you know, USA, some operations in Mexico, and then occasionally international operations. And currently, we're ranked as the 24th largest contractor in the United States. Now, when I, when I told you we were family-owned, that means something, you know, we take strong value and, you know, we strongly value our reputation and, you know, see ourselves as the Michael's standard or the Michael's brand. And part of that is being a good neighbor, you know, respecting the surrounding community, and taking pride in our, in our reputation. And specifically, you know, it's applicable here in our work, but also in our equipment, our facilities and our yards. And if you click to the next page here, you'll see, you know, we have, we take great pride in our reputation. So if you look, you know, this is our world headquarters up in Brownsville, and we like to keep our grounds clean, and we like to have a clean appearance on the outside of the building. And so I mentioned our yard, I hope you can see it. Yeah, I'd like to point out, this isn't a staged photo, you know, this is just, we took a drone up in the air and took a picture. And if you see, you know, this is what our yard will look like at any given time. We like to keep the, our trucks and our equipment in nice, straight, clean rows, and, you know, we, we take that very seriously. So, you know, that helps with dust mitigation, but it also just helps in general with appearance. This is a picture of one of our recent acquisitions in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. It's actually very similar with what we're doing here. We merged a few areas to build kind of a regional hub, had some office space in a building. We actually were able to expand after a couple of years in this one and buy another vacant office building next door to grow, and some vacant land around it to build an outdoor storage yard. Now, what do we plan to do here on this property? Well, first of all, the status of the property, we're currently in, in the process of acquiring the property, and really the, the only and the primary contingency remaining to be satisfied is receiving this special use permit, timely approval. So hopefully we, you know, we hope once this is approved, hopefully tonight, to move forward quickly to, to wrap up the sale and hopefully break ground relatively soon to start transitioning some of those other offices and property from around the country and here as, you know, as needed to start building this up to be the, you know, the regional hub, we, we hope. So what do we plan to do? Have some office space, there's some offices in the front of the warehouse we're planning to buy, so we'll have some office staff here. I'll have some basic equipment maintenance, so, you know, minor repairs, and outdoor material and heavy equipment storage. So we're, okay, I'm sure you're aware, we're a contractor, so we, we plan to have about 70 to 130 pieces of equipment. Now, our equipment can be anything from a, you know, 250 pickup truck, something smaller that maybe is just going to sit in the lot for a couple, you know, maybe a week or a month before it needs to be used, all the way up to perhaps a big John Deere excavator that weighs 100,000-plus pounds, and anything in between. Now, I want to be clear, we don't plan to move it around back there, it's storage, so it's going to be sitting there waiting, it'll probably be moved, you know, hopefully twice, it's expensive to move equipment, so you park it and then move it again when you pull it out. And hopefully for a short amount of time, because frankly, we're not making money when it's sitting there, so our goal is to keep it out in the field and, you know, keep progress going. And then, you know, potentially some construction mats, which are big wood mats that could be in the back. As far as employees, we plan to initially have about that 35 to 60 range of employees with potentially influxes here and there, realizing we're a project-based company, so if we have some big projects, we could maybe have up to another 70 on a periodic basis who would report real early in the morning, you know, 4:35 in the morning to report and then drive out to a job site, and would probably come back later. Or potentially, if there was some storm work or something with our power group, you may have a surge of guys coming through to go make sure your lights are on, right? But usually, we don't get a lot of complaints with that word. As far as timeline, we're looking to take a two-phased approach on this, and actually I'll have you click to the next slide here. So we have phase one. Phase one will be this top area here, we plan to build in this yard, leaving this undeveloped for now, and putting in this small area right here will be the phase one stormwater pond. The reason for this being, there were some potential wetlands discovered in this area. So we, we'd like to take further time, pump the brakes, make sure we, you know, do the research, get the, the proper work done so we know what needs to be done to mitigate it. Those wetlands, for the most part, resulted from pooling. There was a railroad spur that since has been vacated, but that comes through here, and that spur caused some pooling leading to some potential wetlands here. And then phase two would be, so we're hoping to get this approved tonight, phase one. Phase two, we're looking for with a target ETA of this summer sometime, after we've had a chance to get some of those studies done, at which point all of this would be a storage yard, and this would be the stormwater area. Now, note, this stormwater pond is still being, the final plans will be submitted to staff for approval, but this is generally where it'll be. Phase two could move slightly after, obviously after we do some of the studies. Some current pictures of the property, a picture's worth a thousand words, right? This is a picture, just click through them, you'll see this property's been vacant for a while, it's in need of some tender-loving care, you know, some paint, just some minor renovations on the outside, and then the inside's going to need significant work, and, you know, we, we plan to do that to get it up to code. You can see here, looking at the outside, we just superimposed what it could look like here to put some landscaping and to even out the paint, resurface the parking lot to give a visual, you know, again, going back to that picture worth a thousand words, right? So, you know, that's our plan. We've worked with staff, and we've received approval from Plan Committee here. They've imposed some reasonable conditions, and Michael's agrees to comply with all reasonable conditions. And our intended use is a permitted special use, so we would ask that it's approved in accordance with your ordinance. And with that, you know, we have our engineer here, and we're all here to answer questions, so thanks for your time, and we'd love to answer any questions you may have on this application.
Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate it.
If I could, also to add to that, if it was the board's desire to move forward with approval, we would like to make it contingent upon village attorney review, because there are a number of things that, as Andrew mentioned, for instance, the wetland complex, we just recently found out, the company just recently found out that it is a non-jurisdictional core wetland. So our staff and EEI need to catch up with their engineer to make sure that this is something that we can go forward with in terms of the overall design of the detention basin. There's some loose ends on the final plans, but we want to make, if, again, if it's your desire to move forward, we'd like to make it subject to village engineer approval and village attorney approval.
What is the, I'm concerned about the impact of that. From their point of view, that means what? They could move forward, or they would be foolish to move forward?
No, I think that they could definitely move forward. It's a phased plan, as they've identified. I would recommend that our board approve or make a motion to approve the entire site as a storage yard, so once the engineering has worked out and the detention basin design is, is complete, and if there's a need for, say, some off-site storage, I'm sorry, some wetland bank acquisition, those things can move forward with strictly the engineers for their project and then our EEI engineers. So I don't think that they're at risk necessarily, it's a matter of working through the process, and that takes time. Pete can explain it much better than I can, but it does take time in terms of the wetland analysis.
Trustee Bond, the important thing is that the wetlands were taken, are not core jurisdictional, meaning the Corps of Engineers doesn't have the, doesn't have say-so on them, so it becomes a local permitting matter. And the King County ordinance then is what we follow, and the village has the right to allow the petitioner or the developer to buy into a wetland bank to mitigate for that, for them filling in those wetlands. So it's a fairly routine matter, but one of the reasons why it can't be exactly determined today is they have to wait till spring in order to do the final wetland quality index to determine what the ratio is from wetland to what you would go to the bank and buy. But it's going to be routine, in my opinion.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
And I would say this is probably no different from any other project that we see, that the approval tonight is always subject to our staff approving their plan, their design, whether it's engineering, attorney, or code enforcement, or zoning, sorry. So I don't think that's unreasonable.
I have a question. The 35 to 60 jobs, are a lot of these jobs folks relocating to the area, or is it new jobs to the community?
It's going to, it's going to vary. So 35 to 60, you know, hopefully most of those are current employees, the, at least the, the lower end of that will initially be transfers from other areas around here. Now, you know, for instance, we have a rock deal yard. Where do they all live? I don't know, somewhere near there, right? And maybe they live here and commute, right? But hopefully, our plan is, is this being a regional hub to continue to grow it. So you could have more static employees, you know, as far as employment growing here. Also, since we are project-based, you know, there's always the opportunity, if you want to, if someone in the area were to want to be on one of our crews, they're always looking for qualified people, and this would be their home base.
Great, thank you. Okay, if there are no other comments, we'll, we'll tackle these in two votes. First, we have ordinance 1654, which is grant, oop. First, we will have the recommendation, you want to do the ordinance and the recommendation, that'd be funny. Let's do the recommendation of Plan Commission on PC 2014-021 special use.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by trustee Marisak, second by trustee Spurling. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yea.
And that recommendation is approved, four-zero. We'll move right into ordinance 1654, which is actually granting the special use, and I will note that this is a waiver of the first reading and passage on the second this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, subject to attorney and staff review. And we had a motion by.
Me, or trustee Spurling, I second it.
Okay, thanks for.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yea.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
And that carries four-zero. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to a very hotly contested item, which is the recommendation of Plan Commission on our zoning map update.
Thank you. Hopefully, it's not too hotly contested. Every year, by state statute, the, the village is required to approve a zoning map by the end of March. This is our zoning ordinance update for this year. The highlights of the zoning map update from the previous year include the addition of Speedway as a special use at 2110 Orchard Road, the approval of a special use for Ogden Hill for a multi-tenant building, this was the four-unit building that included a drive-through and outdoor cafe that was approved late last year. 1550 Douglas Road, this is the hometown pantry moving to the old Blockbuster location with a special use for a convenience store. 2175 Awkut, which was Heinz lumber, I'm sorry, Heinz Building Supply, their special use and outside storage for the vacant building at 2175 Awkut. And then late last year, we had the approval of a special use for commercial recreational training facility at 625 South Railroad Street. All of those items have been included on the zoning map, that's part of your packet, along with some minor adjustments of, some clarification on some of the zoning districts and some residential areas to match up with changes that have been made in the zoning ordinance text since the time those PUDs were approved. So this is strictly a, a recommendation by the Plan Commission at this point to approve the map, and we would come back for final action at a subsequent meeting.
Okay. I'm sure we have several questions on that this evening. Any questions? All right, hearing none. This is the recommendation, so we will take action on the recommendation this evening. That's item E, which is recommendation of Plan Commission on PC 2015-001Z.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second, call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yea.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes, sir.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Okay. And the next one, which is the ordinance, which is first reading, so ordinance 1657, this is the first reading, and I'll move on to item G.
Any issues with that being on consent at the next meeting?
You know what, because they're not here, we'll.
Put it on separate action?
Yeah.
Okay.
But no summary again, we're, we got the summary. All right, move on to item G this evening, which is also a first reading, which is ordinance 1658, amending section 16 through 18 of the Village Code regarding part-time police officers. And with that, I will ask the chief of police for his summary.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Every two to three years, the Illinois Law Enforcement Training Standard Boards asks us to update our part-time ordinance. So if you remember back in 2012, we had passed this ordinance, the only major change has to do with the hours restricted by Obamacare and healthcare. So in your packet tonight is the ordinance. I know this is first reading, but I'll entertain any questions, and I'd ask for approval for next meeting to, to get the second reading and have it approved.
Okay.
Chief, how many part-time officers do we currently have?
We have six.
All right, if you guys think of any more questions between now and next time, just bring them to his attention or bring them up at the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item H, ordinance 1656, which is amending section three through seven of the Village Code regarding Class A liquor licenses, and this is also the first reading. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Zoffel.
Thank you. Thank you, President Brawley. Based on, based on discussions we had when we were discussing the G license, we're currently proposing two changes to the A license based on those discussions. One would be removing packaged sales from that license, so it'd be just the, you know, sales in the store for consumption there. And then the second is to reduce the fee from 1750 annually to 1500 annually. So that would answer any questions?
We only have, currently have one A license.
Correct.
And that license holder was just catalyst for this.
Correct.
He's okay with these changes?
I know he's okay with the packaged sales, I don't know about the decrease in license fee.
Just go on it.
We had to run that by him.
Will we be refunding?
Yes, we will. Okay.
The difference. Yeah, it came to light that he has this Class A, then doesn't do the packaged liquors, and is not interested in doing that. And instead of looking for a different type of license that might fit him, he's the only one, and I think the consensus or the thought from several of us was, why do we even, why do we have a, a type of a license that allows that? You know, if you're at a bar until 2:00 in the morning, do you really need to buy a six-pack to go home? So. Didn't need to really get into that, but I thought I should.
All right, so at this point, we have eliminated any carryout liquor from any place that is serving alcohol where you're sitting down and consuming it on the site, correct? We have eliminated that.
We will.
I, I don't want to speak so definitively about that, we reviewed this particular license classification. I would want to look through all the others to be able to answer definitively that there's no circumstance where you could be served at a restaurant, for example, and they might they might have retail sale. I'd have to go back and check that.
Or if you were doing some sort of a wine tasting, that you could then buy that home. And that might be.
There might be a few of those circumstances.
But this is if you're at a bar. This is a bar license, right?
Mm-hmm.
There's no fifty-fifty. There's no.
Correct.
Food service required. And you're taking, you know, you can drink, take shots, that kind of thing. You won't be able to go home with packaged liquors.
No, to go.
He actually doesn't do that anyway.
Right.
Which I like.
Correct.
Okay. If you have any questions between now and, two weeks from now, when we'll approve that, bring them up or send them to staff. All right, move on to item H, or item I, which is a waiver of bid and award of contract to the Brickman Group of Naperville for village-wide landscape maintenance services in the amount of nine hu, or ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. And with that, I will ask Director Mike Poobens for a summary on this item.
Thank you, President Brawley. In your packets tonight is a recommendation to waive bid and award contract to Brickman for landscape maintenance services. Brickman has been our contractor for the past two years. They won the contract in two thousand thirteen based on a bid process. They were awarded a contract extension under the same waiver of bid type of language last year. They have again offered to extend the contract. This year, it would be a zero cost increase, so we would be holding the overall cost for the project. In general, I feel Brickman's work has been good to very good. We did have one area, a big area of concern last year, that involved mulching around trees and shrubs in the village. And they, they missed some mark on it pretty badly. We did work with them at the end of the year, about the middle of the year, to get that resolved. And before accepting their submittal of an extension offer, Arborist Ed Pfaff and I met with them, well, it was probably November, to discuss that part of the, the project in particular, to make sure they had a clear understanding of the expectations for this year. So, that being said, it hasn't been perfect, but I feel that they're, they've been a quality contractor for us. Their pricing has been good. Again, they're holding it at no increase. For this year, last year, it was about five-point-three percent, five-point-four percent. So we've averaged two-point-seven percent over the two extensions, which seemed, to me, seems very reasonable. So, again, the recommendation is to waive bid and accept the contract extension offer. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What changes have they implemented? What changes has Brickman implemented that we're not going to see the same problems that we had last year?
I think primarily trustee of firm understanding of the timelines. That really seemed to be the issue last year. Once they started on it and committed the proper staffing to it, staffing was an issue. They were able to get the people, they were able to get the materials. It was, again, understanding the contract timing. And to some degree, myself and Arborist Pfaff being more on top of that. So all of us are very aware of that problem, and I think we're ready to, to conquer that this year. But to answer your question, primarily just understanding of those timelines and the firmness of them.
Okay. I mean, I, I have a hard time understanding that Brickman, being a national company, has some sort of labor problem as, as far as they can't get the additional staff that they need or the materials.
I, I don't think that is a problem. I think staffing is not a problem, nor is material. I think it was a management or supervisory problem with understanding and knowing the timelines that that had to be put down. I apologize if I misspoke on that last statement.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah.
Just to, so the board is aware, because this is a waiver of bid, it requires a supermajority vote in order to be approved. That requires five of you. Because it is a supermajority vote, the village president has the option to vote. He doesn't have to, but he may. In order for this to pass, then, all four of you would need to vote yay and the village president.
And I would state for the record, too, on this waiver of bid, the, this is not something that we, we don't typically waive a lot of bids on this one, and then I think also the next one. I like that we've been doing three-year, we've been doing the one-year contracts and then approving three-year extensions. Otherwise, it does get cumbersome, not overly cumbersome, but a lot of work for staff to bid this, this size of a project out every single year. So we, we bid it out, we get a competitive price with minimal increases, you know, two and a half percent over, over the three-year total. And I would look for us to then go and bid this out next year, to keep with that three-year cycle of doing that.
And what I like about this, too, and we spoke about this, Director Poobens, was the vendor now has local knowledge. They're familiar with our needs, our wants. They know the properties, so the work should become easier on their end and more efficient for us to have to manage it. So I'm in support of this.
Okay. If there are no other comments, this is a waiver of bid and award of the contract, and I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
President Brawley?
Yes. And that carries five-zero. Thank you. Go right back to Mike. We'll move on to item J, which is a waiver of bid and award of contract to Pzone Associates for the two thousand fifteen naturalized landscape maintenance services.
A very similar type of request. It's requesting waiver of bid and award of contract to Pzone Associates for naturalized detention basin maintenance. Pzone has been our firm since two thousand eight, I believe. And I feel has done an outstanding job in helping us get this, this, the naturalized basin project off the ground and meeting our goal of seeing annually decreasing costs. Their estimate of cost for the upcoming year is actually less than last year's by ten thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars, which is about three-point-seven percent. So not a huge decrease, but again, we're seeing those over, the overall project costs trending downward. And I think that's due in part, significantly in part to Pzone's expertise and ability to perform the work as promised. In your original packet, I attached the cost estimate. It printed, all of you can probably read it, but I can't with my cheaters even. So at your place tonight, I did print out an updated version of it. I don't know if we, we could put it up on the screen, too. If you have to hit the plus to about four-hundred percent magnification to read it. So, again, my apologies for that oversight. But the cost estimate breaks it down basin by basin. You'll see for each basin, the total cost is listed at the top of the page, highlighted in yellow. And then the breakdown of those costs is underneath. You'll notice that some of those costs are not highlighted by any color. Those are our typical work tasks that we'll do on every basin. And then the ones highlighted in orange are optional or contract or alternate bids. And they include things like stone outcroppings for pedestrian access for fishing. We've talked in the past about possibly building some footpaths, some very simple aggregate footpaths to some of the basins that get a lot of use from the surrounding neighborhoods. And there's a few of those items. So we've included those optional items for all of the basins, but, well, I believe for most all of the basins. There are some of them where it's unlikely that we'll use them. But we did want to include the cost just so we had our upper end of this contract. What we try to do when we look at applying or building those optional features is, quite honestly, the, the, the activity at the basin, how much the surrounding community is using the basin, how much interest they have in getting down to the water. Some of them are, are a little bit remote, so it's unlikely that we'll spend the, the money to put in footpaths or these outcroppings. But some of them, we would like to provide some of those options, and again, make them more enjoyable for the public that not only lives around them, but any that choose to come and visit. So again, I'm not going to go through the entire cost estimate, but I'd be happy to answer any questions on those.
I have a question.
Yes.
And forgive me for not knowing the names of the basin. The, the one that was the newest one they took over at Blackberry Crossing West, is that the, the one they haven't had? I think they've only had it for two years.
There's a few, Blackberry Crossing West, and then in Valmaray, there's a, like a overflow basin that we just took over.
But the, the one that's on, I think on Concord there, that's kind of in, it's in pretty bad shape. But they did just take it over?
The large one on the southeast corner of Concord and Gorgeous.
Yes.
That is Blackberry West. One of the challenges we've had with, with the development process is there doesn't seem to be a lot of incentive for developers. Well, they don't see the incentive into putting what we would consider adequate resources into developing the basins. So they tend to be developed to the, the lower end of our standards. And on occasion, due to the timeframe that it's taken to get basins up to standard, we've talked to them and accepted and recommended to all of you that we accept cash in lieu of completion. So we do have some basins that when they come in are not to the standard that we would like. You know, I think as the development process picks up, and if we do another large subdivision where we're going to have basins, that's certainly something we'll want to talk about, is how we resolve that, that challenge.
And Pzone's working to correct that basin.
Pzone is working to correct that.
Get that up to our standard. That's, that, I wanted to make sure that that's part of this.
You may recall from past presentations, we have a, a chart that shows over time the decrease in cost. And on the far right-hand side are the newer basins with much higher costs. And over time, that line just comes down to a point where it levels off. So there are some where we're, there is more, more resources, more money. That's what it is, right? It's money that we have to spend to get these things to a proper level.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Couple of comments if I may. First of all, this is a very nice report. It's well-done.
I prefer that one.
It's even easier to read in real life.
I, I would like Trustee Marisak to note the position of the staple. Thank you.
I get that, actually.
At the very end of the report is a total of alternance budget. Is that reflective of the orange areas where the work may or may not be performed?
Actually, the last two lines, access installation and gravel trail budget and alternate budget would be reflected in the orange highlighting.
So it's not in addition to, it incorporates?
No, the, the, the total I presented tonight incorporates the standard work and all recommended, all, not recommendations, but all possible alternate features. So if we did all the work listed in this estimate, it would be the total presented on your cover sheet tonight. I, I don't have a final balance for last year's, but last year's estimate was, as I said, about thirteen thousand dollars higher than this. But we didn't spend up to that full estimate because we didn't construct all of the alternates. Now, some of those funds may have been used up because we found out later in the year we needed additional seeding, as we found on some of them. And I'll present the, the final accounting of the, of the two thousand fourteen program to you when we have it ready. But to answer your question, trustee, the last two-line items are the alternates, and they are included in the total.
It's a very nice report. Thank you.
And I don't want to see, sir, it wouldn't be my desire to hold up approval of the contract extension. But I do want to see the, how two thousand fourteen shook out. So when that's ready, if you can bring that to the board so we can talk about that. I know that the, the desire is that the cost to maintain these is going down, and it is going down. Village-wide, I just want to keep a, a good thumb on that. If there are no other comments from the board, we'll entertain a motion to approve a waiver of bid and a ward of a contract to Pzone Associates.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
President Brawley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any items for discussion. Do we have anything new or unfinished to bring this evening?
I think we have a couple of things we'd like to discuss.
You do?
For new and unfinished business, yes?
Okay. Go ahead.
I had a meeting with Administrator Zofol this morning. I'm wondering if you, if we could just kind of go over what we were talking about in terms of the computer software talking to each other. That would reference what Ms. Torres-Turnage was speaking about.
Certainly.
If we could just revisit that.
Sure.
For their benefit.
I mean, obviously, as staff and departments, we try and maximize our communication, you know, between us, to much, as much as we can, let each other know what's going on that might affect other departments. As far as computers, we do, yes, have programs that do not talk to each other, some of them. You know, long-range plan is, we would like a software package that would include, you know, Public Works, utility billing, finance, community development. You know, some of those programs that will fit all of those will run us three-quarters of a million to a million-plus dollars for a full-service package like that. We try them where we can, and we have like a Pub Works software, which Public Works uses for work orders. Utility billing also has that because they work with that. So we try and get that software where the different departments who need it can utilize it together. Our Pinimation software, which is our finance software, all the departments have access to that so that they can look at their budgets and, you know, do their purchase orders and that kind of thing. So we are trying where we can to make sure the departments have the access to what they need. And our, we always try and maximize our, our cooperation and communication. And like I said, long-term, we would like to have, you know, a software package that can cover all of them, but it is a long-term project for us.
If you're saying that it's caught, it potentially costs between three-quarters of a million and a million dollars, we're coming up to budgetary time here soon. And I think it's important that we at least begin the conversation, because if we don't start down that road, we're never going to get to that point. You know, and maybe we start to carve out a little bit of money and just, I'm, I'm not saying half a million dollars or anything like that, but we just start to, to try and take little pieces out of that. And eventually, the, the pieces are going to grow, and it won't be, seem so cumbersome. Were you finished, Trustee Spurling?
Go ahead.
Going back to the, the communication, I know that there were, had been some complaints regarding snow and, and communication as far as, a couple of questions I had had. Once we reach a two-inch snowfall, the police, the, the chief of police gives the okay to go out and take it. And I don't necessarily like the idea of tying up our police department, our officers doing the ticketing. I, I know that they've got a lot of other things that they've got to do, especially in times when the weather's bad. I had been toying around with the idea, and I, I had mentioned this to Trustee Spurling, I think I mentioned this to you, Matt, and I also mentioned it to, to Trustee Bond, of the potential, and I'm sorry, I meant to call you this morning and talk to you about this, Rich, but I had, it slipped my mind, of using our code enforcement officer, potentially bringing him in in a snow event. That way, they could write those tickets. That way, they, the residents realize that that's enforced. But then there, there seems to be this potential communication problem with the software. And in my discussions with the chief, or maybe it was with Building Inspector Clupar, you may have to be lead certified in order to use certain software, the, the police computers and the software. Is this something that the, the board is willing to discuss? And, and I would like to discuss it, and I'd like to get in the snow conversation when, when Trustee Heinz and Trustee Lee are here, because I think that they can add a lot to it. But is it something that warrants discussion at a, a near-future meeting?
I would say, obviously, you and I had this conversation earlier last week. The other part of that as well, we had talked about pulling records ahead of time when we know a snow event is coming for the areas that are typically a problem. So if we can have our records department pull information for a neighborhood or streets, however, whatever the parameters are that you put in there, and then we know where the hotspots are where we don't get compliance. And then ideally, if we can have our code enforcement officer get out there at the beginning of the storm to help with compliance, he's going to have a list of areas he really needs to focus on, and he can be writing the tickets. Obviously, this past snowstorm, we, we did write a lot of tickets, and that was from our officers, which thankfully, I guess they weren't tied up with so many accidents. But we do want them freed up as well. I mean, they could still write the tickets. But if there's accidents or things like that, they can certainly focus on that, and then this issue doesn't fall by the wayside. So I, I would say, I'd, I'd like to discuss it further, but that was the idea that Trustee Youngerman and I had discussed earlier.
You know what? While I, I definitely don't agree with that at all. I think we started chatting about that a little bit at the last board meeting when we were talking about the snow enforcement. The one concern that I would have is that this is management, this gets into management of the daily operations of the village. You're managing their resources and directing them to use a certain person a certain way. Well, I think that the, the idea is a good one, that some, that staff, that maybe we direct staff to look into and, and. direct staff to look into and, and if it's, if it works for them, if it works for the management of their resources, then we move forward with it. But if we're going to, at this board level, have a report from staff about a specific employee and how that person is going to deliberate their business, it gets a little bit into the management function and less into policy. So, I would just caution the board with that. But I do think, actually, after hearing, we issued how many parking, uh, snow parking? A hundred and sixty?
I will, um, my stat man here to my left has the stats. Uh, it's over, I believe, one fourteen. I'll, I'll defer to Armando.
Thank you. This, this last snow event, which went from the thirty-first of January through February third, where we tracked, we issued a hundred and fourteen tickets. So far this season, the total's been one fifty-two.
Do you have a number, how many duplicate from the first storm to the second?
Yes, three.
Okay.
Was that dated, this leads back to trustee Spurling's earlier conversation and Ms. Torres-Ternage's issue. Was that information difficult to procure out of your system? The duplicates?
No.
Okay. And when I, I had an earlier conversation with director Young regarding code enforcement and we apparently have some reporting software that's within the code enforcement software where he can draw some information. And if we can get our department heads to share that information, we may not have to go to a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar software program. It may be several hours of staff time to cross-reference those two and anywhere where the address shows up twice because it's been a code enforcement and a police issue, police calls, we now know that we have a, a problem property. So, I think that there's a Band-Aid to this. We, the chief and I were talking about it on Saturday and I said, if we have to go back to the old-school legal pads, Xeroxed them and faxed them to each other, we, we can get the information transferred without going into technology and software and having to have iPads and iPhones. It's a matter of just getting the information, sharing it between the two departments. So, I would love to see staff look at that option in the interim.
And I think as a Band-Aid that, you know, they might find that that's something that's very helpful. But I think if we're, we're the, the village board, if we're looking at long-term, big-picture policies for the village, maybe an integrated software, village-wide integrated software is the best thing that we can aim for. And if that has a price tag on it and we work towards that over X number of years, I think that's a, that's an awesome vision for the future to provide services to the village of Montgomery and all of our residents more efficiently and effectively. I think that that would be an awesome task for us to look into moving forward.
But at the same time, we don't have to wait years to actually.
Yes, to get results.
Right. We, it's not like we're, our hands are tied for X amount of years that we can't do anything. We can still, well, we can ask staff to do that.
Yes, no, definitely. And I think there's a lot of things where we can't do. There's a lot of things we can't do, but this, I think we can certainly overcome.
Shall we talk about snow removal for a little bit?
I, just one thing real quick. I'd like to say thank you to chief Myers and, and to deputy chief Sanders for handling the events of Friday. Uh, that could have been a very, that was a very serious situation. And, uh, thank you guys, thank the, the rest of the police department and thank the neighboring agencies because that could have turned out a lot worse than it did. So, thank you.
You know, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. I, I, do we want to talk about this a little bit or, I know Steve was saying, I, I think we should mention it.
I think I'd rather wait until Denny and, and Peter here because one of my ideas, I'd like to circle back to the conversation that we had as a board a couple of weeks ago where we had talked about the, the increasing potentially the fine for, for parking on the street. And it was the direction of the board to keep the, the fine where it was. But I think that during that conversation, we kind of got on to some of the other ordinance fines and we didn't come back to that snow fine. And I'd like to see potentially, Matt, Matt hit the nail on the head when you said the board dictates policy. And I'd like to see, after discussion with the, the two absent trustees, that the, the board makes it a policy that if you are parked on the street during a two-inch snow or more, it is policy that you do receive a ticket. It is policy that if you are a repeat offender, you do receive a notice to appear because the, the storm last week was a, the fourth or fifth largest in Chicago history. So, to say that it was a unique situation, I think is really fair. you, you see the, the, when people don't follow those ordinances, and yes, we had some problems as a village as doing snow, but you see that when people don't follow those basic ordinances, the problems that it causes. There were eventually vehicles that were towed, but on a fifteen-inch snow, if a vehicle sits there, it screws up the snow removal for that hat, whole half a block. And so, they, they've really got to get their vehicles off the road. We can be better as a village doing snow, but we can also be better residents to help the village effectively do snow.
I lost my train of thought on that. I think we've, we went into the fees and I think the board was okay with keeping them the way they are. The, I'm trying, is that policy to say, I mean, if it's a, if it's a violation of our ordinance, it's a ticket. If it's a repeat offender, I think this board is more than, at least I hope, more than adequately said, if you are a scofflaw, then do what you have to do, which is issue a notice to appear or whatever that you guys determine is the best method for that and we'll move forward with that. I, I hope that that's.
Well, I, I think that they've shown that they, they do.
Yeah, they issued fourteen tickets.
Correct. Deputy chief Sanders and I reviewed our last meeting and we, we had clear direction from that meeting that repeat offenders are going to court.
About a hundred and fifty, I forget that.
One fourteen.
This time, plus forty-ish from previous.
Thirty-eight.
We have three repeat offenders.
Correct.
So, it doesn't seem like the repeat offender issue is as big an issue and we're going to give those folks notices to appear. I mean, I, my car was stuck in the middle of the street. I wasn't parked there. My street hadn't been plowed. I got stuck. Had it not been for several neighbors coming and pushing me back into my driveway, I would have probably had to get towed as well, just the plow wouldn't have been able to get through. I was stuck in the middle of the street. So, I'm, I mean, I'm, did we tow vehicles?
Yes, we towed a few.
That were blocking?
That were in violation of the snow ordinance, yes.
Okay. Good.
Real quick, we also had, I checked a couple of different, same time periods, you know, Friday to Sunday, or Monday. During this Super Bowl Sunday, we had accidents increased like four-hundred percent and we had forty-three motorist assists during that time period. When I checked other weekends at the same time, there were less than five. And what that, what that means is when, when the county and the state and everybody says, if you don't have to leave your house during a snowstorm, that's what it means. It means stay home because you increase the work for us. We had forty-three motorist assists during that snow event and I, I started the, the snow event when we discussed it at staff. I was at the corner here with Ramon at La Skina talking about his liquor license at seven o'clock on Saturday night. When I came out at seven-thirty, it was freezing drizzle. So, I, I, I believe we started right there, seven o'clock, seven-thirty on Saturday night. Um, I'm sorry, yes, Saturday night. So, i- it's important that you abide by, if, if you don't have to travel, you reduce the amount of work that we have to do. And accidents, like I said, were up ungodly. So, thank you.
The disturbing thing, the disturbing comment that I would make is that we had a large number, a very large number for Montgomery of vehicles that needed our assistance and we had accidents, but somehow we still managed to give a hundred and fourteen tickets to people who are parked on the street. I know it's a nuisance. I know that if you don't move your car, it, it is a pain for everybody on your block and for our public works employees. But when we have people stranded in their vehicles on the highways and car accidents, the parking on the street during a snow event, it, to me, is a second-tier problem and I know that at the PD it is as well. So, they went, I think you guys went out of your way or above and beyond to handle those situations, but also meet the intent of this board, which was to enforce that, that ordinance. And we did this for three vehicles over the, over the last two events that were repeats. So, we don't have, at least based on that piece of data, a huge, huge repeat offender problem. And Super Bowl Sunday, a lot of those people were guests probably. So.
I'm, I'm glad the chief brought up the, the fact that Sunday was bad and we had a lot of stranded motorist assists. I had asked attorney Anderson to look into this prior to the meeting. Um, I'm not sure if at the meeting or during the snowstorm during the blizzard this week ago or whatever it was, if Kane and Kendall counties had declared states of emergency, but I had asked attorney Anderson to check into if, for some reason, we do get a, a something, an eighteen-inch snow or something and Kane and Kendall County declare a state of emergency, does that also mean that the village roads are under a state of emergency? And if the village had the authority at, at any point, if things got so bad that either the village board or the village president could declare a state of emergency to keep people off the roadways? And so, I'll turn it over to attorney Anderson with the answer.
Couple of things. Number one, the, there are a number of statutes that regulate emergency situations. Certainly, the village has the authority to declare an emergency within its village boundaries for its, the streets that it controls. That can be done a number of ways. It can be done through the village president. He has some emergency authorization power. However, what can actually be done with that is fairly limited, but it doesn't even have to go that far. The chief of police and the police department have the authority at any moment to close a street as they deem necessary for public safety. That's just a general proposition, anytime, anywhere. So, you certainly have that power. But there are broader powers at play as well and those are granted actually by the state of Illinois to the governor's office and that's for EMA or emergency management associations. And the governor's office certifies and delegates that power to either large-scale communities. Aurora probably has its own, Kane County, Kendall County. And then the local communities typically have liaisons to those emergency management associations. So, the village of Montgomery, I'm certain, is well-represented on those task forces as well. And if they're ever activated by the governor or by an individual county, then there would be interaction with the county in that situation. I don't know that that happened for the snowstorm. I don't know that that was an emergency situation, but if it had been, then certainly the county would have authority even over local streets if it deemed necessary to be able to close streets. But ultimately, that would become kind of a dual jurisdiction because the chief and the police department retain their power as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That suggests to me something we've discussed from time to time. Typically, a request for action by the village attorney would go through the administrator or village president because we're using resources that have a value attached to them. So, unless that's changed, I thought I should kind of restate that. In other words, the, the village attorney doesn't take direction from an individual trustee and they don't entertain requests for service from an individual trustee. That comes from the village administrator or the village president.
Yes.
Although I will tell you that if one of you calls, I will answer your questions unless you specifically as a board direct me not to, I'm not about to say no to any one of you.
And I think the policy, written or unwritten, has been that if it's an answer that somebody can give to you, feel free to call any department head or, or attorney or engineer on that. If it's something that requires actual, physical, get off the phone and do work kind of sort of thing, I'd kind of like to leave that to Jeff's discretion on what, what crossing that line is. And we all know that one of us doesn't dictate or direct staff. We do, we direct staff together.
If I have a question though, I'm going to answer it or I'm going to ask it, whether it be of the village attorney, the village administrator or staff.
Yes.
Period.
Well, you can ask that here publicly and.
That, that's why I did ask that here publicly. I wanted to give him a heads up in case there was anything that he had to look up. That way, it was for the benefit of the entire village board.
Good. Thank you. The one thing that I should mention too, since we are talking snow removal, I've been working with director Poubens on a, I've been talking with him about doing a comprehensive review of, of the event, kind of what transpired, if you want to delve into just the, what we're going to be doing in the near future.
Thank you, President Brawley. As you said, per your instructions, I've started to review the storm events of last weekend and how we responded to it as a public works group who did primarily does the staffing or the, excuse me, the plowing. So, just started on that. I would, I want to get something back to you quickly, you know, time is somewhat of the essence. So, I would think possibly not the cow, but the last board meeting of the month and I'll, I'll present it to the village president first for you. But, you know, and we're really focusing on trying to look at all aspects of, of the, of our service, whether that was staffing or equipment or scheduling or call-in procedures or driver information. There's a wide variety and the more you think about it, the more issues, you know, that you can come up with. My goal is to try to explain what I feel went well, maybe put more interest to everyone is what didn't go so well and some recommendations for how we resolve those. And then that may possibly include recommendations for, that have budget implications, not to say that we have to do them or not. I think definitely part of this is, as a community, having a clear understanding of what the service level expectations should be during different events. And I'll give you a little teaser. One of the things I've realized is that we have probably not done a good job of providing public information insofar as what the road should look like, how long should it take, how many people do we have out at any one time? So, there's some, definitely some low-hanging fruit, I think, in those areas right there that we can just provide to people that might help answer some of those questions in advance or give them an understanding of what, what to expect. Doesn't prohibit anyone from saying that's a bad expectation level and we need to change it, but again, it'll at least make people aware of, of what we're aiming for. And I, in talking to, to many, many people over the past week, I think that issue came up quite often is what the expectation was for Sunday morning or Monday morning again. And I'll reiterate that certainly not to say that we are, are one-hundred percent pleased with the results of the plowing effort. We, as I've discussed with many of you in, in village presidents' press release and discussions, there were parts of town that certainly didn't get handled as well, you know, and we'll be focusing on those additionally to see if those were anomalies, if there are problems with our plan and how we get people out there. Again, I think driver input, we've come to see that there are little pockets across the system that seem to get less attention and we're not quite sure why yet, whether that's the geography of the route or the particular driver or what it is. So, again, I'll be working on that for certain this week. I've started today on that and again, I know time is of the essence, so I'll work to get that back to you as soon as I can. If I could just add, you know, I, I certainly got my list of things as I, as we've been talking. If any of you have particular items that you've noticed, please share them with me. I'd be more than happy to hear them. We may have already thought about them. I may have them down, but I'd rather, you know, hear what you feel issues were so we can investigate those as well, as well as the public. For anyone here this evening or that listens to this later, please let us know. I mean, obviously, there were, there were plowing issues and some streets did not get plowed as well. Those we're very aware of, but if there's something that you feel is unique to this storm that you haven't seen in others. unique to this storm that you haven't seen in others, we'd certainly like to know that.
And one of the things that was unique was 15 inches of snow over the course of, uh, whatever it was, 36 hours.
Yes.
The one thing, I know that we're not 100% happy with the result, with the total effort that we put in, but that's not to say that the effort that our guys put in over the course of that, the next week, plowing the streets, uh, in the village of Montgomery, I, I think it's worth mentioning that they put in, uh, some of them up to 16 hours at a time, and that's just unbelievable. So, uh, I appreciate all the work that they do to, uh, keep our roads safe, and we'll look forward to that report, and invite anybody, um, if you do have comments, to bring those to our attention. And the guys from Wisconsin are probably laughing a little bit that we're talking about 15 inches of snow.
One of the questions that came up just during conversation with someone at work is, how long does it take one of our drivers to do a route? Their normal route during a normal storm, and this is, I'm asking for this to be part of your, and how long does it take to do that route during this storm?
Certainly.
So, I, I, it was, and it was, when they asked me, I said, I have no idea. It could be three hours, it could be four hours, I don't know.
You know how I love brevity, so buckle in here. Uh, just, some basic information, we have 162 lane miles of pavement in Montgomery. Uh, and a lane mile basically is one lane of pavement, one mile long, so a two-lane road, one mile long, we'd have two lane miles. We use exits, so we think it's a good measure of the effort, tells you how many, gives you some idea of the area that needs to be plowed. Uh, that 162 miles is divided into six routes, so we're somewhere in the 25, 27 lane mile range per route, which is, in my opinion, quite a lot. Uh, to answer the question, it really depends on the amount of snow. Our baseline, uh, timeframe is four hours for one driver to salt his entire route. That's just a salt with no plowing. So if you had snow in there, it just, again, obviously, the more you get in the shorter timeframe, it, it extends that time.
Okay, thank you. And I think that's good information for the public to receive, because the expectation of, you know, I mean, the plow came down my street before, before, maybe it was 6:30-ish, and I didn't see him again until nine o'clock that night, but there was 19 inches of snow. I wasn't jumping up and down and hollering, and there was 19 inches of snow, and, and there's a lot of town. So I was trying to take that into consideration of how long it's going to take to get it cleaned. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sir?
I, I just want to echo a little bit of what, uh, president Brawley said. I know we, we kind of got beat up a little bit with how this turned out, but I would like you to express to your staff that we're, we really appreciate that they were out there doing, doing it.
I, I will, and, and I've already expressed, many of you have told me those thoughts already, and I wanted to share that with the guys this morning. Um, this happens, public comment and online comment trends towards the negative. Uh, there were a lot of positive comments, too, but...
Right.
Many of you shared with me Saturday that same sentiment, and I made sure the guys knew that today. So thank you, I will reiterate that to our crews. They did work very hard.
Just for clarification, 16 hours is the longest your drivers can be out according to ID, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't want them out, even if we could, we wouldn't want them out longer than that anyway. That's really too long, but, uh, yes.
And I, I'd like to say one thing, too. If you recall, from February 2011, uh, we had 17 inches of snow, and then last week we had 19. There were subdivisions that the police department couldn't get into in 2011. Uh, that didn't happen last week. Public safety wasn't impacted at all, and I want to take the time to thank Mike and his crew. Um, to answer your quick question, Doug, um, if you drive down Gordon and it was snowing like it was, by the time he turns around and comes back, tries to get the other side, it's already, it's already covered again. So you don't get to a cul-de-sac, because you're doing your primary, and I'm sure Mike's going to cover that here in the future, so, uh, thanks, Mike, because it made police departments' life a lot easier.
You're welcome, chief, and I, I don't mean to extend this. If I could just add one thing about the public safety, that, uh, concern was expressed a number of times over the weekend, that people were concerned about emergency services reaching their house, and certainly not all the roads were plowed well enough for an unescorted ambulance or a police car to get into. Our, our past and current practice has been, we're in contact with our own, uh, police department through KenCom, we're in contact with the other fire districts and emergency services, and we work to coordinate. When they have emergency calls, they'll contact us. We actually did have, uh, one instance with one of the local, uh, EMTs that had to get to a house where our driver met them en route and got them into the site. So ideally, we'd love for all the roads to be clean all the time, but I don't want people to think that emergency services are compromised as much as it might have appeared. So, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on, uh, you can see the future meetings there, next week, Tuesday, uh, February 17th, be the day of the village address in this room at 8:30 in the morning. And then we do have committee the whole meeting that night at 7:00 PM. Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment of an employee pursuant to 5ILCS 120 over 2C1.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
All right. We'll call the meeting back to order and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Spurling, seconded by trustee Youngerman. Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
And we're adjourned, thank you.